Okay, we will call to order the June 2025 meeting of the City of East Peoria zoning Board of Appeals. First order of business would be roll call.
Driscoll.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Tippett.
Here.
Burschers.
Brunner.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from the meeting held on May 12, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting on, was it, May 12, 2025?
Thanks, Tim. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, George. Okay. First order of business then is case SU-2025-004. That's the petition of... Pardon?
Ari.
Ari. Oh, thank you. Ari Asani for a special use to allow used car dealership with the outdoor storage of vehicles on property located at 2337 Washington Road. That property ID number is 02-02-19-416-017. Would the petitioner approach the podium?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Are you Ari?
Yes.
Thank you. Ari, will you raise your right hand for me? You're gonna need to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And go ahead then and tell the board what you are looking to do with this property. And we've got, I think, we've got two new drawings or two new attachments. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's having a great evening. Thank you for hearing our vision here and thank you for looking at the drawings as well. We tried our best to kind of portray our vision of what we have for our building. Basically, what we're thinking about is a used car dealership, a used car wash, so we're gonna convert it to a car dealership, and we're looking to store the vehicles outside of the building on these parking lots as well. We're looking to have an office where we can greet our visitors and our guests, and we're looking at having our own kind of like service for our cars as well.
Okay, questions for Ms. Asani. Tim?
So, just to clarify everything here on the site plan, appreciate you providing that, because I was curious. It looks like there might be roughly 16 parking spots potentially for display vehicles. Is that about accurate there?
Yes.
Okay, if I see the customer parking.
At this moment, yes. We're looking at getting approval for 50, just for the whole parking lot. However, we're looking at only using about half of it or less. Most likely, like five for guest parking, two for accessible, and then the half of it for just storing our own vehicles. We're planning to start small, but we're just looking to get the approval just in case our business does bloom in the near future for us to have those spots available.
Okay. Do you know generally what your days of operation and hours of operation would be?
Yes, we're looking at Monday through Saturday. Monday through Friday, it's gonna be 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and then on Saturday, we're only gonna be open till 3:00 p.m.
Do you plan on adding any exterior lighting to the lot at all?
Yes. There're gonna be LED lightnings and everything. There's not gonna be any type of wires outside as well.
Okay. I think that's it, though. I think that's everything I have for right now.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, for your site plan with kind of your layout for the building.
Yes.
The garage doors are facing in the back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the front is all gonna be closed off except for one of the bays, and then it's just gonna be a front door over there where guests can enter the office space. And the back is just gonna be open for us to get our vehicles in, service them, wash them, whatever we need to do for them.
Sure. And you mentioned you won't be servicing your vehicles, no other vehicles will be serviced there?
So far, yes.
Okay. And then, I'm only counting 39 parking slots identified on the map.
Yes. So, we're not planning to use all of it right now, but we can mark the rest of it if you guys were needed to. I mean, we just roughly measured for right now. We still haven't done any renovations or anything like that.
Okay. And are you thinking the remaining 11 would be in the back?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
John? Don?
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. So, you've talked a lot about the parking already. So, you've got four, five, six customer spots.
Yes.
Then the rest of the spots in the front are cars to be sold?
Yes.
And the back as well? Is that a sell lot as well?
Yes, half of it is gonna be for selling cars, and then the rest, we're just gonna keep unused for right now until we kind of expand our storage and everything and get our business blooming.
Are you doing repair in here as well, or is it just minor repair to get the cars ready to go?
Minor repair to get the cars to be sold, and we also want to make sure all of our cars are serviced, all of our cars are good to go before we even think about selling it to somebody else.
I do like how you're using the entire lot. You're doing a great job with that.
Thank you.
That's good. Is all of this, all the gray area, and then when you go to your map, is that all paved or some of it gravelly?
Yes, it is paved.
It's all paved, hard surface?
Except for the grass areas.
Yes, yes, okay. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, on the one photograph, you got to like the landscaping?
Yes.
Is that, that's where you're actually planning on, like, doing some landscaping and stuff?
Yes.
Nothing coming like down the front a little bit?
So, because our cars...
I know you have cars parked there, but I was thinking maybe something...
Yeah, our cars, and they need to be visualized by our customers, yeah.
Cars are landscaping.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't want to block the view of the cars because that's our first impression of that we're gonna leave off. Of course, if we were needed to plant something small, we would down the line, but for right now, we're planning on using the off-site.
Okay. So, Ty, the lighting, does that have to be approved by the city, whatever they use, because of the dealership across the street?
Yeah, so, I mean, we'd certainly look for lighting that's focused on the lot itself, particularly when you're in the back of the building area, anywhere where you're adjacent to residential. That's kind of a touching point, so making sure that it's not a kind of a broadcast lighting. And LED certainly helps that out.
Right, definitely.
That's something that we'd want to take a look at once you get that plan laid out. This is where I put the lights, get that addressed.
Of course.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And then, for the two bays where it looks like you're going to pull cars in, and obviously you're going to do some minor repair work and all that, will you be changing oil and will you be, you know, storing used oil and things like that? Because I think the city's got some requirements for that.
Yes, and we're okay with the requirements because it was a car wash. There's already like a draining system inside of the base.
Okay.
Where if there was any spillage, it can go down and it goes into the water seer.
Do you know if there's an oil separator in any of those?
I am not exactly.
Which separates the water from the oil as it drains out. That might, is that a city requirement, Ty, for...
It would be a requirement, but since it was a car wash, I don't know exactly what's in place there, but I know that was a topic of discussion with our One Stop Group, so that'd be something we'd want to make sure.
Yeah, we will make sure if there isn't any that there is something in place for that.
Yeah, we don't need, yeah, we don't need the oil going into our storm system and councilmen's other one would have our heads. Question, back to the landscaping.
Yes.
The city has certain guidelines for property sizes and things like that, and in some of the notes, it looks like the city has suggested close to 220 points
Yes.
of landscaping, and how close does this plan come to the 220?
It's a little bit of a, like, a couple of points above, so.
Perfect.
Dang, making this easy. Okay, does anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I had one more question that I was looking at, just the street view here. Is there any type of fencing or barrier along that south line of the property between that residence that's behind you?
Yes, there is a fence back there. I think it belongs to the residence behind us.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I just, if there wasn't, I just may recommend that as some type of a barrier.
There is one in there, yep.
Yep, okay.
And the one next to us is just another business.
Yep, correct. I saw that too. Awesome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I got, I got one more question. So, how many, it may have been spelled out earlier, how many vehicles, you have 31 or 32 spots that you're showing, how many vehicles are you wanting to be able to be either stored or viewed at any given time, not including the customer parking?
So, as I said, we're looking at 50 parking spots. This is the best-case scenario if we were to have enough funds and do all that we plan for the building. 50 spots and five of them are gonna be for guests, so it's gonna be 45 of cars for sale.
I think it's on the flip side of your...
Yes. There's like another where I have outline kind of like what our thoughts are about the parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I think that's all of the questions from us. You can have a seat.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the zoning board on this particular case? Seeing no one, we will move on then to the second case of the evening, and that is case SU-2025-005, and that's the petition of Nancy Alexander for a special use to allow a fence inconsistent with Section 5-9-3 of the East Peoria City Code on a portion of the property located at 220 Avondale Drive. Property ID number is 01-01-25-102-010. Would the petitioner approach the podium, please?
Hello.
And state your name for me.
I'm Nancy Alexander.
Excellent. Will you raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Nancy, go ahead and tell us what you have done.
Okay. There's a little story behind this, so please bear with me. I've been a resident at 220 Avondale since 2001. The situation regarding the fence began in 2016. My husband, Chris, and I decided to make Avondale our forever home and started a complete renovation of our backyard to include installing a hot tub. Our new backyard was designed to be our sanctuary, a place of comfort, peace, and relaxation. At the time, there was a chain-link fence separating my backyard from 218 Avondale's household backyard. Prior to 2016, Chris had installed fence slants in the chain-link to provide a little more privacy and try to keep their dogs from constantly barking at our dogs. The space for the hot tub was limited to where the power connection was, so we had no choice where to place it. It is in direct view of our neighbor's deck, which the few times we first used it, we found it very uncomfortable that the view was completely unobstructed. Before our backyard renovation was completed, Chris was diagnosed with stage four colon cancer. From 2016 to his passing in the summer of 2018, we rarely used the hot tub due to Chris having an ostomy. We spent many of his last days in the comfort of our backyard. After Chris passed, I was very uncomfortable with the lack of privacy in my backyard. I spent many hours reflecting and grieving and felt very vulnerable being seen by the neighbors, especially in the hot tub. It was very unsettling for me. When mostly men on their deck, I was easily in their sight. I also did not feel safe grieving in my backyard on my patio, as I have in the past. I had experienced several unwelcomed advances from a male house guest on the neighboring side and did not want to be subject to that again. I needed privacy for the use of my hot tub and backyard to feel safe in. In late 2018 or 2019, I went to Home Depot and I purchased four 4x8 fence panels and paid for installation. When they came to install it, they stacked the panels horizontally and staggered them down the sloped grade. I had no idea permit was needed. I would have thought the installers would have taken care of that. There was no mal-intent or purposeful deceit on my part when I had the fence installed. Chris was a union electrician and took care of all those things when he was alive. I was a grieving widow, wanting privacy, security, and peace in my backyard sanctuary. As a 39-year female veteran, I'm struggling with privacy and security issues that I'd rather not discuss in a public forum. The fence adds much-needed security and privacy for me without any negative effects on the neighbors. The fence does not obstruct the neighbor's view of the ravine or surrounding landscape or pose any sort of danger. I have recently been informed that the neighbor has skin cancer and should not be in direct sun. The fence actually provides additional sun blockage. The only obstruction of view is directly into my backyard and a direct line of sight to my hot tub. So, here we are, six years later. I hope the board will consider the circumstances and pass this request for the special use of an additional two-foot fence. Thank you for your time, consideration, and your public service.
Okay, questions for Ms. Alexander. Tim?
So, I don't know if this is a question for Ms. Alexander as much as it may be more for Ty. So, so this is an eight-foot tall fence, so it's two-foot inconsistent with city code, right? Correct. And if the, like, say, for example, a property owner was to have built almost like a shade barrier, let's say like a ivy trellis of some kind that was, let's say, the same size, the same shape, and the same height, and it was not on the property line to be considered maybe by definition a fence, would we be having the same hearing tonight?
Likely not. I mean, I think the fence is something that is typically on a lot line, near a lot line, has, you know, some potential for impact upon a neighboring property owner. If it's a screen that's placed adjacent to, you know, we've seen this in other cases where you've got a deck or a patio that has some sort of screen that gets placed, those are not typically considered a fence. And the challenge with this one is that we just don't have a variance process, that that would probably be a more likely scenario, but variances are all called out in the code, and we don't have any allowance for a taller than six-foot fence. There have been cases on the commercial side where we've permitted a taller fence, usually as a condition for a special use.
Okay, so that's...
More than what you asked for, Ben.
No, no, that's fair. I appreciate all the additional explanation. So, that's just saying this for the record for my fellow ZBA members here. So, as you're all well aware, I typically vote very consistent with city code. So, if it's really not allowed by city code, you know, unless there's really strong compelling reasons, I tend to vote, you know, consistent with city code. However, there's, you know, I think there's some unique circumstances related to this case, and given that, you know, if this was not built on the fence line, you know, we wouldn't even be considering this. So, that's why I brought those questions up. So, I just wanted you guys to have that explanation. That was all I had.
Thanks, Tim. Michael?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Don?
I think I have one question. You said the fence is 16-foot long? You said four pieces that are 4x8. Is that correct?
So, it's actually 32, so my math could have been wrong. So, there's four separate panels.
Okay. And what, and what are these panels? You said they're from Lowe's?
Home Depot. They're composite, and they look like stone, so they're decorative. It's not slats.
How many, how many years ago was that? I'm just, I'm thinking about going to Home Depot.
It was either 2018 or 2019, to be honest.
Curious if they still got them at Home Depot.
Yeah.
When I drove by, I couldn't see that far back. You got a lot of, you and the neighbor both have some really nice landscaping out there. And so, it surprises me that there's this sightline issue back there, but I understand. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, can I clarify some stuff? I was there. Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. So, I was there this afternoon, and I went back to the back, and the fences, like she said, are composite, stone-like, gray color, very nice-looking. And when you stand there, you see the top rail of the neighbor's deck, and you see the top of their windows in their house, even with the eight-foot fence.
Okay.
As far as obstructing anything, the only thing it would obstruct is if took them to look down on her property, because she's dug down. And so, they're looking down at her. So, I understand why she would want the eight-foot fence. It does no harm to the property owner that's there. I mean, it's been there six years, and it's just now coming up. That's, so, that's all I have said.
But if you were there, so I guess this is a question for you, George, and maybe Ms. Alexander, if you can confirm, but if you're in your backyard and you're looking at the neighbor over this fence partition, you can still see their windows?
A portion of them.
So, if the neighbors were in their house and not on their back deck, they could still see into your backyard? Is that true?
I've never been in their house, so I can't answer that, but I can see their slider, so I would think they could see into my backyard.
See into the top rail of the deck, standing in the backyard.
So, I could still be at the neighbor's house, standing on the deck, and still see into Ms. Alexander's backyard?
Some of it, yes. But with the, when the hot tub's closer and stuff, you're not gonna see that now.
Okay. Well, I don't know that I can say what Tim said, which is, he usually votes with the city ordinances, but I think for me, my concern is every time we allow something like this, we get closer and closer and closer to it being a free-for-all, and then all of a sudden, you know, everybody that wants to put up a fence is gonna go as tall or high as they deem necessary. Ms. Alexander may plan on living there for a long, long time, but then I also think about the people who end up buying the neighbor's house and this house, and now they're, now they've got a fence that's taller than what the ordinance has called for and may or may not like it, I guess. So, I have a little bit of a concern with that.
I sent pictures. I don't know how well they turned out with the packet I submitted. And I asked if I had to have them printed, and he said no, Mr. Brewer.
Yeah, we got a couple of pictures. I don't, did you send any of the fence itself?
There should be, yeah.
So, I don't have, this is the only real picture I've got. And that's taken like from the fence, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I took them from this way, too, and submitted them. They must not...
Did we get any of that printed?
I didn't remember seeing it, but we might have.
Well, the narrative that Brad sent out, he sent that on Wednesday after I was here for a meeting, and...
Okay.
I'm going back through the online packet. And I've got an arrow of view where Brad has circled the fence on the lot line, and I think that's it. Oh, no. I've got a picture of the hot tub.
Yeah, there's one more, but it doesn't show the fence.
I have some on my phone if you want to see them.
I'm good with it. You're okay with it, Gina?
And you have something? Oh.
Whoa. Can we take a, can we take a look at her picture?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you give me a second? Can we? Maybe ask for other people to speak in my behalf?
You have more than one phone, one picture on your phone?
When I drove by, I mean, I could tell there was a fence there. I definitely couldn't tell that it was stone.
Careful, careful, careful.
No.
You got it? So, you're 218?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
Hey, before we, before we go too far, I just, can we follow procedure if you guys don't mind, you know, have him come to the mic, but we probably ought to, you know, wrap up with the petitioner first and then go to public comment, and then he can come up.
Yes.
Just, I wasn't trying to be rude. I just want to make sure everybody has their opportunity.
You're fine, because I need to swear him in anyway if he's gonna talk.
Yeah, we could give her a chance to find the pictures if you want to.
I only have like 300 pictures of fence when I'm in a search, so let me...
Well, if you want to go ahead and take a seat, and then we'll ask for public comment in the meantime. How's that? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the zoning board on this particular case? Okay, go ahead and approach the podium, please.
And that's from his side. Yes, my name's William Feipel.
Can you spell your last name for us?
F like in friendly, E I P like in pizza, E L.
Okay, will you raise your right hand for me, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Excellent. Go ahead.
All right. I called Mr. Cole when the issue of sun on the deck became serious. Nancy had a series of arborists come in. They cut the entire south side of my trees down. I had to move all the furniture out of my deck so I could get under the eaves and keep the sun off my face. I've gotten four or five cancer doctors who say I cannot be in the sun, period. I can show you my side of my face if you'd like to see it. So, my friend who came to help move the furniture heard me gripe about what had happened. He said, "And that's, then that fence over there, that's legal?" And I said, "Why?" And he said, "That's way more than six feet, and it's blocking my view of the woods, at least the left, the east side is blocking my view of the street." You didn't see that. Okay. So, I, when I called Mr. Cole, I suggested all kinds of options. There's a straight section of the wall that goes between my deck and Nancy's hot tub. She can keep that. I, sorry, by me. There's another section farther east, farther west. That doesn't seem to block anything. I don't care. It's that section that sits most easterly that blocks my valley view, and that's why I moved there in 1976. Remember, it's called Valley View Knolls. Okay, and I long for my deck. I put the deck in with the addition in the early 90s. I've had that deck there, sitting when I can outside. My wife's got really bad asthma. She has all kinds of responses to mosquitoes. We're not out there that much. There is a couple of times where I've had friends over, including my goofy brother-in-law, Jack, who likes to talk to ladies. Nancy might have seen he was hitting on her. He wasn't. He just talks to ladies in his nice, affable form. So, my issue is I just don't want that section over there to impede the joy of my deck sitting. And I understand Nancy wants privacy. I like, and I would like some, what, consideration. Okay, that's it. Anything else? I got your pictures of the deck from my side. The deck, the pictures show a four-foot fence in front of the wall. I call it a wall and not a fence. The, that wall sits 10 feet high at the farthest easterly side because it, the ground's sloping downward. The wall is going flat, so it, the height is 10 feet off the ground where it reaches my view. Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Feipel, for following the procedure, and hopefully I didn't come off a-rude there.
Oh, no problem. It's okay. They were looking for pictures, and I had, I have Oh, no problem. It's okay. They were looking for pictures and I had, I have two pictures.
No, these are, these are very, very helpful for consideration, so I, I do appreciate you sharing that. That's all I've come and I.
I would have had more if I knew I needed more.
Yeah, you might want to hang out there. They may have some additional questions for you.
Yeah, I've got so you talked about how there's a certain section.
The one, you'll see it, it's the one where the fence ends and
Yeah.
Right there.
And how, so these are eight-foot wide sections, is that correct? They're eight foot tall and eight foot wide?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're, you would like to have one, the top four foot of the eight, of the last eight foot?
Yeah, that's at least, that, that's the minimum, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You can have a seat.
So why after, why is this happening after six years that the fence has been up though?
Okay.
I'm not trying to argue with you, but like.
I'll give you my story. I came back from Mayo Clinic for cancer treatment all summer long and the fence was there. Okay, and I don't know if, you know, people who've gone through this before, but this was on the side of my head.
Right, I understand that.
I have, I have memory issues, all kinds of problems, and so I was not in any position to arm wrestle. And didn't realize, to me at the time, that eight-foot was unacceptable. That was beyond code. Only when my friend pointed it out that I realized that, okay, fine. It is, it is a serious nuisance. I have to move my furniture out on the deck and that's the way I look now. So the problem was aggravated this year when the second set of arborists came in and cut down even more of my trees. Pushing more sun out of my deck. Now, if I really wanted to sit down in the, down, off the deck, in the back, I, that, that, that wall would block me and give me shade. All it does is kill the plants on that side of my, that side of my yard. Because she's on the south side, I'm on the north side.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, now you really can have a seat. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this particular case? Please approach the podium.
Can we see the pictures?
Oh, she's got them yet.
And they're all eight feet. It's the way the slope goes that, you know, we can't help with this, the yard slopes.
Yeah, they step up. As the ground moves up, the fence steps up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say probably, yeah. Yeah, it just steps on.
Okay. I'll have to bring you back up to the podium if. No, no, whoa, 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 whoa. One thing at a time. Holy cow, I'm losing control. Okay, will you please state your name for me?
My name is Christine Queen. I live at four hundred Avondale.
Excellent, thank you. Christine, will you raise your right hand for me and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead.
A lot of people have come to me because I used to be on the Valley View waterboard and they still ask me questions about, "What's this sign saying?" And I'll tell them. I went down to Nancy and Nancy took me into her backyard and I'm thinking, "Wow, this is privacy for both of the homeowners." Because it was, you could barely see the top rim of the casement of the neighbor's window and the top of the covering of the deck. So you can hardly see anything. And I'm thinking, "This is a win-win situation for both the neighbors so they don't invade each other's privacy." When they're sitting on the deck, she can't see anything. When she's in her hot tub, he can't or his family cannot see anything. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it seemed very like a win-win for both of the homeowners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? There'd be a no. Okay, anyone else in the audience wishing to appro, to address the board on this particular case?
I have another picture I would like to show.
Okay.
Okay, yep, that's and there's one more section?
Yes.
Right, okay. Okay, okay.
Okay, will you state your name for me?
Yes, Casey McDowell. I'm
Casey.
A mile down the road, not in the neighborhood, but Nancy is my mother, um, so I'm just going to speak.
Raise your right hand for me?
Yes.
Or your right hand?
Jumping ahead.
Yeah, the right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, you explain again then who you are and what your.
Clearly, I've never had to do a stand before, so. Casey McDowell. I live about a mile away. I'm Nancy's daughter. I have three children who spend a lot of time in her backyard. Not only is it an oasis for her, um, my kids are in the hot tub lot. We have family dinners over there once a week. So my oldest is eight, so when he was about one was when the fence got put up. I love it because, not judging anybody's lifestyle, but I'm raising three children, so I like that there's like a little bit of a sound barrier there so they're not hearing inappropriate language, loud language. It does provide a little bit of that sound barrier there as well. Also, my husband was a Peoria police officer, took an early retirement and then actually we owned a tree business for a few years. So the first time that trees were trimmed in my, on my mom's property, our company actually did it. They got heckled quite a bit for cutting the trees and as my husband knew the laws, he said, "Anything on her property that is obstructing her view, regardless if it's her tree, can be trimmed because it's on her property line." And so this last time of cutting things that were obstructing her view, which my mom spends hours and hours and hours in that ravine, planting and pulling weeds and I'm there a lot too, helping with that. It's just, her backyard is beautiful. And so, again, there was an issue with trees being trimmed that were obstructing her view, that were on her property line. And then now the fence, after six years, is stemmed from that happening. Which is just disheartening to me because I worry about my mom enough as a widow and being alone and so the fact that now I have to stand up here on her defense because of the backyard that she's created that she enjoys by herself, unless me and the children are there, seems crazy to me, but I just wanted to speak on behalf that she has a wonderful backyard. I've created great memories there with my kids over the last six years. And so I would be extremely sad to have that hindered, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the zoning board on this particular case? Like, because now is your time. Do you want to come back up?
Hi, William Feipel again.
Pardon?
William Feipel. I thought I better sign in or something here. I'm six foot three. I cannot see over her wall at her, and into her hot tub. I would have to stand on a ladder to do this or get on my roof and I can't do that anymore. I, I have all kinds of dizziness problems these days. So you cannot see from my deck into her backyard if I look straight forward. You can, sitting from my deck, see the, see the valley and eight feet of my, eight, eight feet of that view is blocked now. And that's, that's the real issue. I, and from that angle, from my deck, I cannot see into her backyard past that section. If you took the section out, I would not be able to see into her backyard at all. Anything else? I, there, all kinds of things were said a while back, but never mind. That's all over the dam. Okay, all right. Anything else I can help you with?
Any other questions? Okay, you can have a seat. Okay, you, I'll have to approach the podium. I have to have you on microphone. These meetings are actually recorded and streamed live.
I'm sorry. I just have a question. Actually, it was Mr. Kelly brought it up in, in your first question. What is the difference if I have that eight-foot partition or fence, or if I plant ten feet arborvitae?
Well, that's, that's probably more of a question for Ty, but I, I'm not, I'm not going to lie seriously, within the last like minute and a half, that, that thought actually crossed my mind. I'm like, if she built, if she planted arborvitae there, this would be the same scenario and, and I'm not, I'm not about ready to create, you know, an argument between, you know, two different people, but I mean, there, there is, there is fact there.
Yeah. Distinction is a natural buffer versus a man-made one.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Nope, I, I'm glad that you did because again, I, I, the same thought popped into my, my mind seriously within the last two minutes.
Any further questions or comments? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak to the zoning board on this particular case? Seeing no one, we will move to deliberations. First deliberation is case SU dash two zero, no, it's not. First deliberation is case SU dash two zero two five dash zero zero four and that is the petition of Ari Asani for car, car sales and outdoor storage at twenty-three thirty-seven Washington Road. After conducting a public hearing and considering the facts, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact and recommendation. Will the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare?
No.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No. No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
No.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
R have adequate utilities, access, roads, drainage or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
R have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site, minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Discussion, comments or emotion?
I got a couple of questions probably for Ty here. So this is coming up as a special use. It is in, it is zoned correctly. You're not asking for rezoning. It's a special use because all of these types of uses have to come.
Outdoor storage and display, correct.
Outdoor storage and display, okay. Do you remember or can you look up real quick the, the neighbor G-inspired, I think it's called, something like that? How many spots we?
Last time I looked at it was fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven is what we had given them as the number for maximum spots. Okay, thank you.
Do we know the property size in reference to this property size? I kind of looked at it on the map. It's not that, I mean, just from the naked eye, it's not that.
I don't, they're pretty comparable.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know exactly.
And I know fifty, fifty-seven was a squeeze and, and honestly, looking at this site map, assuming that that's scaled well, I mean, I think there's plenty of room, honestly, for fifty vehicles on that, on that lot.
This is a nice site and they're using it very well. I mean, I'm, I'm impressed with that. I, I think the G-inspired site, I was doing the same thing. I was scaling it on my phone and then going to the next spot and see if it looks smaller or bigger. I thought G-inspired looked a little, little bigger. Fifty-seven compared to fifty, if they want fifty, to me is probably a reasonable number.
Agreed.
As well.
And to be clear, they're asking for forty-five to be displayed. It's other spaces, they talked about five for customers and then probably some for employees.
So you're saying G-inspired has fifty-seven displayed?
That's, yeah, that's what their special use is for, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven displayed, oh, okay.
Yeah. That counting employee or customer parking.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So just to make sure, you're saying forty-five to display and then others would be for, yeah.
So forty-five to display, okay.
Fifty total parking spots. And she's got one accessible by customer, thirty-three cars for sale and eleven parking spots possibly.
My mic's not on.
So I can make a motion that was there any of the questions anybody else wanted to bring up? I can make a motion for to approve this request with the two hundred and twenty-one points of landscaping, which it seems like they've got already figured out. And then a maximum of forty-five displayed or stored vehicles. Is that correct? You guys agree with that, Ty?
I'll second.
You agree with that?
Okay, we have a second?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
And there was nobody, there was nobody that spoke after them, right, on their particular?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote?
Driscoll.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Tippett.
Yes.
Brishers. Bruner.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
I'll vote in a favor.
And this will go to city council?
So same room, next Tuesday at six o'clock.
Yeah, and you may have questions from the council members or possibly a neighbor will show up to city council. And so it would be a great idea if you were here for that portion of it. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next deliberation then is on case SU dash two zero two five dash zero zero five. And that's the petition of Nancy Alexander for a fence inconsistent with our city code at two twenty Avondale Drive. After conducting a public hearing and considering the facts, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact and recommendation. Will the establish will the establishment, maintenance and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare?
Maybe.
Possible.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
Yes.
Possibly.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
No.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
R have adequate utilities, access, roads, drainage or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Doesn't apply.
R have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site, minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Doesn't apply.
Not applicable. Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Yes.
Comments, discussion?
Can we get the, can we get the petitioner up? I've got one question.
Approach the podium for us.
And I know it wasn't long, but I'm glad everybody has, has stayed for, for this conversation here. So my question is, and we've got two pictures from, from your neighbor here, which are really good pictures that describe a lot of things here. And he has been stating that if you took off the top half of the last four, the last, the top half of the last eight-foot fence piece, to me, that he was saying that's really all he was wanting. So before we discuss that or anything we may do here, I'm just going to ask you what that would do to you because it, it does seem to be away from your your hot tub a bit.
I agree.
But go ahead, you, you.
Well, first of that, I would have to hire someone, so it's going to be costly for me. And truth be told, I will plant arborvitae. I, I value my privacy a lot and I do not.
Do you know it's, are these two sections here, can that top part, top half be taken off pretty easily? Do you know?
I'm not a fence installer. I know they would have to come out, remove the posts. They might.
You don't know if they're two different sections, okay.
Well, I'm pretty sure it's two different sections.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know how they're fastening that.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. That's all, I just wanted to get your, your thoughts. Thank you.
More comments, discussion?
That, I saw Mr. Feible raise his hand, so we kind of opened the door. So, Mr. Feible, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks, Tim.
No problem. I just, did you have a comment, Mr. Feible?
There was an occasion where one of the caps came off of one of the posts, and someone went in.
Can you talk louder or move the mic up? I can't hear you.
Oh, that's right. I know. I got, there was an occasion where one of the caps came off one of the posts, and someone went up to fix it. And I talked to him at the time. You can slide those. Those are four-foot pieces that slide in and up, inside the slots of the posts. So, that's all you need. Apparently, it's two guys slide it off and take it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If someone's interested in making a motion, you can make a motion to approve, and you can make a motion to deny.
I was gonna say, is that, Ty, our only option is to approve or deny as presented? Are there, can we propose conditions, like?
Yes, I mean, I think you could, yeah, I think you can provide an option if you want to. But if, it would be either in the affirmative or the, the negative.
Does this go on to city council, or does it stop here?
Because it's a special use, it would go on council.
It goes on to city council.
It's a recommendation to city council.
Okay. And whatever happens here tonight, I would, I would encourage everybody to go to city council as well for the, for the exact same thing.
I'll make a motion to give her the, whatever we need to, give her to leave it at eight foot.
The whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second to George's motion to approve as presented?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Driscoll.
No.
Whitman.
Yes.
Tippett.
I don't like being the third vote.
Yes.
Broschiers.
Yes.
Bruner.
Yes.
Kelly.
No.
Motion passes. It'll go to city council?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Okay. Next order of business is old business. I don't believe we have any new business. Anybody?
Uh, Ty, do you remember, did we put any stipulations for review on the property that's next to the high school where they have the monitoring well?
That's, that's come up on Facebook, hasn't it?
Yeah, I saw comments about it, and concerned residents about the screening and blocking view.
So, I was in contact with the engineer for the project a few weeks back. She indicated that somebody was gonna be down this week, the second week in June, might be third week, but middle of this month to address the screening. They are in the process of closing out that permit with the EPA. They've been providing results to our water department. All intents and purposes, it looks like it's gonna get wrapped up. It's just a matter of them getting the approval to shut things down and remove the trailer. So, but at this point, they do intend to come back and at least get the screening reattached. It's kind of an ongoing battle.
Oh, it's, it's come unattached?
Yeah.
Oh, is that the, is that what they're complaining about?
No, people were more, more or less complaining actually about the obstruction that it's creating, although I've driven that many, many times, and I don't really think it's honestly that much of an obstruction.
I'm hopeful that, I mean, they made it sound like they were in the, and had submitted paperwork into the IPA, and it's just, it just takes time to get it reviewed and.
Who owns the property?
So, it's, it's still owned by, I think it's a Valero subsidiary, but it's a, the gas station operator, or a, it's a refinery operator. So, it's a large operation. We don't have other Valero sites in Illinois. I think they're out of state. I don't know what their intent is. I mean, they went to the expense of cleaning up the property, you would think it would be to ultimately sell it and.
Yeah, for some type of beneficial reuse.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once that's all done, you would suspect that the fencing could all come down as well, right?
Yeah, because it really was designed to protect the site for the monitoring equipment that was there, and.
Right.
Yeah.
We, we're the ones that told them to put it up, right?
Just the screening, the fence was already there, I believe, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Remember, it's been about an hour and a half.
Yeah, I think that was the one where I, I dialed in and then realized I missed the meeting.
Was that?
I think that was the one. Yeah, I don't, it's not a major concern. I just was curious if, I couldn't remember if we put, said, hey, review in six months, or review in one year. I couldn't remember.
Yeah, they may be a little beyond where there was, because they did get an extension on that, and they indicate that it is wrapping up, and that's, that's better than what we've heard from them in the past, which has been, it's still going, it's still going. So, it sounds like the site has, has been remediated. For a period of time, there was an audible buzzing noise when we went by there, and that's, that's ceased now, so.
I think I remember asking them, like, what's the timeline for this? And they basically said, kind of they don't know, because they have to get to that remediated point where all the readings are acceptable. So, that's what, you know, generates, or that's what dictates the timeline for removing everything. And I know I expressed, expressed some concern about people pulling out onto the busy street to make sure that they still had ample view if they were making a left turn or whatever. So, I guess, having Ty say it's being wrapped up is better than no news.
Yeah, I honestly, I think that after they came back, I think they actually added more screening and screened the entire property in, because I don't think that that one corner was originally screened, which was part of the concern, although, yeah.
They screened more than we asked for?
They did end up screening all the way to the, I think they basically screened the entire property, but I think part of that was because it was such an eyesore, because they weren't maintaining it well. Hadn't, grass hadn't been cut, trees hadn't been trimmed.
Yeah, there were all kinds of weeds and stuff growing on that non-treated part of the property.
Yeah, and which I think they've actually done a better job in recent history of maintaining the property. So, anyway, I'm just curious, because I didn't remember if we put a time stipulation on it. That was it.
Okay. Uh, any other, any other new business or old business? Okay, now is the time for the citizens' opportunity to address the zoning board of appeals on non-agenda items. Is there any one? And there is no one. So, we, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Tim. Do I have a second?
Seven.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.